All right, great. Well, good evening and welcome to the May 4th meeting for the Grand Rapids Public School Board. We will get right into things. Thank you for joining us. Reverend Mathias, can you please take the role?
Okay, Dr. Flores.
Present.
Ms. Davis. Kimberly Davis.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Grant.
Present.
Mr. Ross.
Present.
Mathias, present. Ms. Shakki.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay, thank you. And do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay, so we do want to make an acknowledgement at the beginning of this meeting that during our April meeting, we did approve a resolution, our COVID-19 board meeting rules and public participation in electronic meetings resolution. That resolution allowed us to hold virtual meetings as well as move public comment to one point in the agenda. So for our guests and our participants, just please know that we have that in place and that is allowing us to to move forward with these virtual meetings. First up, we have celebrations for this evening. Dr. Gorman?
Madam President, members of the board, I have a few folks I would like to celebrate this evening. Of course, this is Teacher Appreciation Week and there's probably no time in the history of the Grand Rapids Public Schools where we should be appreciating our teachers more than we are doing now. And we truly appreciate all the hard work our teachers have been putting in. So please show some love to all of the teachers who are out there during Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you. It is also National School Nurses Day on Wednesday, May 6th. So my assumption is, as we get into the fall, our school nurses are going to be playing a significant role in helping us get students back into schools. They already do a tremendous job of supporting our students every single day. But as we move into this uncharted territory, I know our school nurses are going to be doing an incredible amount for us moving forward. Last week was Principals Appreciation Week, so I would like to also appreciate the principals in the school district. We have some phenomenal principals who are working incredibly hard right now, so I would like to appreciate them as well. Few other groups, one of which, of course, the essential workers. There have been persons who have been working every single day even since the executive order, so the first executive order. So persons have been monitoring our buildings, distributing food. Our security officers, I believe, have worked every single day. We have folks packaging devices, packaging food. So those essential workers, thank you so much for continuing to help this district. Again, families, I want to thank families at this time. I am, of course, I have two kids at home who are working on distance learning themselves. And it is not as easy as, you know, just logging in. There's a tremendous amount of work that the teachers have to do to prepare their students for distance learning. And there's a tremendous amount that our families have to do as well. So I want to just acknowledge our families during this time. I know folks are under a lot of stress and having to to help your students through this educational process when it's not something that you're accustomed to every single day. I just would love to give them a shout out. And lastly, just back to the teachers again, we have some rock star teachers in this school district. We really do. I'm just so proud of the work that's being done. Everyone has such a positive attitude and our goal is truly 100% of student engagement at this time. All means all and we can't rest until we get there. Ms. Grant, that's all I have for celebrations.
Thank you. We do not have our student representatives with us today, so next would be the superintendent's report.
Okay, superintendent's report this evening. Madam President, members of the board, I would like to give you an update on our response and where we are now. Of course, our continuity of learning plan was approved a few weeks ago. And since then, we've been working tirelessly to ensure our students have the resources they need. So at this time, I will share some data with you. First piece of data I would like to share is we have distributed 6,500 devices. That's Chromebooks and iPads. Actually, we've distributed 6,000. We have about 500 students we found were not connected, so we're getting them connected this week. So that will take place. We've also distributed 400 hotspots to students. So as soon as they get the devices home, if they do not have internet access, they can connect to that if they have internet. We have distributed 100 hotspots to many of our staff members who do not have internet at home. So that's paraprofessionals, teachers, and others who may not have internet access. We are providing that to them as well. Can everyone still hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have, we found this week that 80% of, yes? We have found this week that 80% of our students approximately have logged on, logged on last week. So it ranges from around 70% to the high 90s. But overall, we're about 80% of our students are logging on, so we're very happy about that. Of course, the goal is not to just log on. The goal is to participate in all means all. So we will be, we will be working to do that. We have distributed 130,000 meals. So I was, I've been spending two days a week at the meal sites. Of course, our meal sites are open Monday through Thursday from 11:30 until 12:30 at Ottawa Hills Sibley, Ottawa Hills Sibley City and San Juan Diego, which is in Wyoming on the southwest side. So I would like to give a big shout out to Mr. Larry Johnson and his team and all the four folks who support his work because that is a tremendous task with distributing 130,000 meals. For those students who do not have, for those, for those students who do not have internet access, we are mailing right now anywhere between 500 to 1,000 print materials to their households to ensure every single student gets connected. So that's a major task that we're doing this week. Of course, we tried to connect every single family with the internet, but just in some instances, it was not possible. Some sad news today that I had to share with our senior class. I shared it on my weekly video and the weekly videos have been getting lots of hits. I think the last one, not the last one, but the one before, received 8,500 hits. So at a school district with around just shy of 16,000 students, you know, over 8,500 hits is pretty good. I shared with the seniors today that we are moving to virtual graduations. I had a meeting with our principals this morning. They're super excited about virtual graduations. Of course, they would like to do face-to-face graduations. But what we're going to do is we are going to have valedictorian speeches, salutatorian speeches, class president speeches. Of course, superintendent will speak, building principal will speak, we will have keynote speakers. We are going to do some creative things so that all of our seniors are highlighted. So not only will you see their name, not only will their name be called out, but there will be a visual that really shows every single senior in the class. So we're taking this time to celebrate our seniors virtually. We're going to do this June 3, 4, and 5. So we're going to do it on the last day of school and then the two days after the last day of school on June 4 and June 5. It's very important to us to have scheduled times for each ceremony. I don't think it's a good idea to put them all out at the one time. All of our students deserve their special time where they can maybe have their family members watch these ceremonies. Of course, I'll be asking all of you to help support these efforts. I know some of you have seniors who are going to be graduating virtually. And I know it was your hope and my hope as well that they'd be walking across the stage. But I'm hopeful that you will help with concurring diplomas and supporting these activities. And so the next couple of weeks, we'll be making some specific requests, Ms. Grant, of all the board members to support these efforts. And that is all I have right now in the superintendent's report. Oh, additionally, I'm so sorry, Ms. Grant, preliminary planning for summer school and then preliminary planning for the next school year. And Dr. Robie is actually watching this this evening. And she and I as well, she's been attending every cabinet meeting, so that transition is going wonderfully. And Dr. Robie and I have also been connecting once a week. And then we connect with Ms. Ms. Grant and then some cabinet members as well. And so we think it'll be a very smooth transition. We can't wait until she gets here. So how you doing, Dr. Robie? It's great to see you this evening. That's all I have, Ms. Grant.
Thank you.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Because I can, I can hear you and I can see you.
Okay.
Do you want me to take role? We skipped over that or do you want to just skip over that?
Oh, we, we actually, Reverend Mathias stepped in and took the role. But now that we have you back.
Everybody's here.
Yes, we'll, we'll, we'll have you jump in for the action items if you would like.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I am relieved.
Sorry about this. My computer that I had all set up had an unfortunate accident. I spilled a glass of wine over it, so I have to go to the desk. So that's the only excuse I have, so.
I did not tell them what you spilled. I left that to the imagination.
I am not ashamed.
The other board members are sober, by the way.
I only start mine at seven, so you got 10 minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. So thank you very much, Dr. Gorman, and thank you to your team for all the hard work that you guys are doing, especially to make this year's graduations really special for, for our seniors, especially as we can make it. And I know that Dr. Baker and Mr. Ross have a special, special interest in graduations this year. So we will make sure to support their students and all of our seniors as best as we can. Okay, next we have our action items. And the first item is a resolution to temporarily amend GRPS graduation credit requirements. Dr. Gorman, would you like to provide any context for this?
Absolutely. So the Grand Rapids Public Schools graduation requirements are 22 credits. The 22 credits also include the Michigan Department of Education, 18 mandatory credits to graduate. During this period of time, we have many students, approximately 70 students, who were working on credit recovery classes, many of which were non-Michigan merit curriculum classes that under, under the normal circumstances, these students would not be able to take these classes, nor would they be allowed to graduate. We are asking for a modification this year during this time of crisis. Whereas if students have met the 18 graduation requirements and Michigan has the most rigorous graduation requirements in the nation or one of the, we have, of course, four years of mathematics, Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II, and then a fourth year math class, four years of English, three years of science, three years of social studies, of course, some arts classes, physical education, health, and two years of foreign language courses. We, we would like to modify that this year, going from 22 to 18. It will help approximately, it will help approximately 70 students this year who by no fault of their own were unable to take those evening credit recovery classes. So of course, they'll be meeting the state's requirements. In our alternative education setting, right now, per board policy, our students in alternative ed need 18 credits to graduate. Therefore, we are asking for, during this time of crisis, to modify those credit requirements because the students had no opportunity to complete those credit recovery courses.
Okay, and so just to clarify, our district's requirements require our students to have more credits than the state requirement.
Correct.
So the state is at 18, we are at 22. These individuals meet state requirements, they've taken their core classes. It are those, these are those extra classes above and beyond their core classes that they're unable to take during this online learning time. And what you're asking and what you're suggesting is that we don't hold that against our students, but we still allow those 70 students to graduate.
Correct. And this is also a recommendation, one of the recommendations from Dr. Michael Rice, who is a state superintendent. We have some flexibility here. We need to do whatever we can to help our students become successful. And unfortunately, if students were taking one or two courses in the evening or credit recovery courses as a result of ending school in May, they were no longer able to complete those courses. And they essentially had about a month where even if they, they had about a month where they, they could not do very much from a credit recovery perspective.
Thank you. Do we have anyone who has any questions or any points for discussion?
I do have a question. It won't affect any scholarship or GPA in terms of that, those things?
Not at all, not, not at all. They will have met the state of Michigan's graduation requirements. So it will not affect that at all. We are going with a credit, no credit grading process for this semester. We firmly believe that that's the best way to grade as a result of some students having more access than others. And even if all students have technology, there are some students whose environments may be more conducive to learning, there may be quiet spaces in homes. There may be some support in homes that others do not have. So therefore, we firmly believe that the, the credit, no credit grading piece holds everyone harmless. If you had a 4.0 going into this, you'll have a 4.0 still. Of course, if you receive all those credits, the same would be the same for students with 3.0.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution to temporarily amend GRPS graduation credit requirements?
So move.
Support? All right, Ms. Lewis, will you please take the role?
Yes, Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shakki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have.
And I voted, I don't think I, she called me. Yes.
Oh, Dr. Baker.
I didn't call you, Mr. Baker? Oh, I know why, because you're way down on the bottom here. Sorry about that. Thought I had this all organized. Okay, Mr. Baker, I'm assuming you're going to say yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Baker, how do you feel about it?
Okay, he said, he said yes, Kathy. We got him down as a yes. Okay, so motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Board of Director election for the Kent Intermediate Association of School Boards. There are three seats available and three candidates. They were unable to hold their annual meeting, so they're asking that individual boards approve these seats. Are there any points for discussion on this?
None of us, Dr. Flores wants to be a writing candidate.
Well, you know how I got this job.
Respectfully declined.
I got this job at the first meeting when Maureen Slade said, why don't you do it, Kathy? So I didn't even get elected. So if somebody wants this job, you know, it's okay with me.
Kathy, we think you're doing an amazing, amazing job.
I knew you'd say that. Thank you. Yeah, okay.
Wonderful. So Kathy, do you have the three names that are up for the positions?
Yes, I do. I have them.
Okay, can you remind, can you remind us of the three names?
Anne Hemming from Kellagville, Thornapple Kellag. Catherine Downs Lewis, Grand Rapids Public, and Beth Milonowski from East Grand Rapids.
Okay, do I have a motion to support all three of these candidates?
Motion to support.
Support.
Okay, Kathy, can you take the role?
Sure. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shakki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the operating budget for the Kent Intermediate School District for 2020 to 2021. We have their resolution. Dr. Gorman, would you like to have anyone provide comments for this?
Absolutely. Madam President, members of the board, I'd like to ask Larry Oberst to come forward. I'm not sure what expression you use when you're going into a Zoom conversation, but come forward, that will work. And he has arrived. So Larry?
I have arrived. Can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening, President Grant, members of the, of the board and Dr. Gorman. As is required of all local districts within the ISD this time every year, we need to act on the ISD's general fund budget. Now, what is included, I believe, in your package is all of their budgets, which includes special education fund, CTE fund, and I think another fund. But the only fund that we need to act on is the general fund. And that is the fund that houses primarily, we start readiness program, the administrative arm of, of the ISD. And in establishing the budget or budget this year with all the uncertainty in terms of funding going forward, a chunk of what the ISD gets in the general fund comes from property tax revenue. They're not as impacted. In fact, the property, property values in Kent County this year went up 4.8%. And there probably will be a headly rollback, but still, they should see values go up in the neighborhood of 4% net, which provides a chunk of their funding, including the enhancement millage, which gets distributed, as you know, to all the local districts. And this past year, it's worth about three and a half million dollars. So the cuts they made in the budget relate primarily, in terms of revenue, relate primarily to the, to the funding they get from the state. Now, a chunk of that funding is the Great Start Readiness Program revenue. We have not seen an increase in people allocations in 2014. The governor's budget that came out, are we still there? You still see me?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
The governor's budget before the pandemic hit, it actually had proposed an increase in those funds. But the purpose of this budget, the ISD, just kept that funding flat again for 2021, so they saw no increase. So total, actually, total revenue in, in the 2021 general fund budget are decreasing almost 4%, 3.9%. Expenditure side, they're down about 1%. Now, they had some built-in cost increases relates to full cost, compensation adjustments in their, in their union contracts of, I think, 1.65%. They also have an increase in their hard cap, which has already been established for the next year. It's 3.3% increase in the hard cap. And there is also presumed about a half percent increase in the MIPSers contribution that districts would have to make. So there are some increases in the cost side, but still, overall, they, they were looking to reduce expenditures by about 1%. Revenue by, by almost 4%. They're going to use, propose about 600,000 of their fund balance to cover the deficit for next year. This year's amended budget, the 1920 budget, is proposed to use almost 615,000. So over this year and next year, the ISD is going to use about 1.2 million of their fund balance to cover the deficits. And that in a nutshell is the general fund budget that you have in front of you for the ISD. Questions I can answer?
No.
I would, I would recommend the board approve the budget. Again, we had the discussion at the KSBO meeting, which we had just last, last Tuesday for, for a more in-depth discussion from, from Kevin Phillips. But I would recommend the board approve this budget for the 2021 year.
Okay, if there are no points for discussion, do I have a motion to approve the Kent Intermediate, Kent Intermediate School District operating budget for 2020 to 21?
So move. Support.
Ms. Lewis, will you take the role?
Yes. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shakki? Ms. Shakki? Did she disappear on us?
I don't see her.
Oh, yeah.
Here she is. I don't know what happened there. Yes.
Okay, Ms. Shakki, for the acceptance of the operating budget for the KASD, how do you want to vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the purchasing agenda. Mr. Oberst, do you, well, first, are there any questions around items on the purchasing agenda? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
Motion to approve the purchasing agenda.
Support.
Who said support?
Support.
Who supported that? Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shakki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have the revised 2020 board meeting schedule. And I do want to provide some background for this. Currently, the executive order allowing for virtual board meetings is only through the stay-home, stay-safe period, which right now, from the governor, is through May 15th. After that, if we are no longer able to have virtual meetings, we will take measures to ensure that board members, as well as anyone attending the meetings, can practice social distancing. That may mean relocating our meetings to a larger location or taking other precautions recommended by the Centers for Disease Control or Michigan Department of Health. We will notify the public as soon as we know more. So that is a little background. So you guys did receive some information on a revised schedule. But there may be other details forthcoming for that exact schedule. Right now, what we do know is that there is a meeting scheduled for the 18th. That will be. that will be, actually become a work session. And as of now, that will be a virtual meeting, but we do still need to see what is even allowed once those provisions are lifted on the 15th. Dr. Gorman, I'm, I'm thinking about this. Do we want to vote? We can vote on this revised schedule, but understanding that we may need to vote again and make other changes.
That sounds good, Ms. Grant.
So do I have a motion to approve the revised 2020 board meeting schedule?
Motion to approve the revised meeting schedule.
Support.
And who supported that? I didn't. Who, who supported that one?
You can use me, Jen.
Jen, thanks, Jen. Okay, Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda grouping? So moved?
Support.
Uh, Ms. Lewis?
Ms. Davis? Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have our discussed, discussion item, which is that May 18th meeting. We have it slated as a board meeting, but what we previously discussed, once we made changes for virtual meetings, was that we would have one board meeting a month. So I am suggesting that we use the 18th as a work session to do some work. We, we were supposed to have our board retreat where we would really be discussing things around inclusion and equality. And we were going to have a presentation given to us. So I am proposing that we move that to our 18th meeting and really take a look at how this situation right now, COVID-19, has affected us as far as equality and, and the inequities that we have seen come to light for our students and what we may be able to put in place, what supports we can put in place long-term to support our students and our families. So I wanted to propose that to you all. Take a look, have some conversation around types of policies that we can put in place. I've spoken with Ms. Davis and will share information to help you all prepare for this meeting. But that is what I would like to propose. Do you guys have any feedback or any thoughts around that?
Sounds like a good idea. And I definitely think we all want to have that update and have a chance to see about planning something long-term. So, yeah, I, I would recommend, I don't know if she's available, but definitely like Dr. Robby to at least listen in. If she can't participate, obviously at least to listen in, to share her critical thoughts with you about what she hears from that. And so, no, I'm in support of that.
I agree.
President Grant, will this be online or will, by the 18th, will we be able to get together or don't you know?
We will have to see how, we, we'll have to see how long virtual meetings will be able to be in effect. It's technically under the stay-home order. And so we, we will have to do a little research on how that changes things. We would like to have people be as safe as possible for as long as possible. So we have to see how the law provides for that. Okay, well, so that is our update. We will find out how these rules and regulations play into that and also share other information for you all to be able to prepare for that, for that meeting. We do have public comment for this evening. We have Mary Bowens. I'm sorry, I don't know if you were ready, but we will. Okay, here she is.
Good evening. How are you? All right, good evening, President Grant, Dr. Gorman, and board members. I want to share with you the results of a survey I sent to members of GREA. I asked three main questions. One was, what's going well? Two, what suggestions do you have? And three, what will you do differently? I received over 16 pages of responses from over 130 people. The overwhelming response to number one, what is going well, told me that the relationships were critical to the, the success of distance learning. Educators are excited by the prospect of seeing their students, the reason they do what they do. But even more importantly, they have a reinforced relationship with their colleagues. A Facebook page was started for GRPS educators. It has become the go-to place for educators to troubleshoot, support each other, and share information. Connections have been made to find Spanish-speaking staff to support families, how to navigate the learning platforms, the shortcuts, the links to additional videos, and even staff-made videos to help others. Even within building, staff is working together to support each other. Grade-level teams are creating and sharing resources and lessons. When it comes to the suggestions, the bulk of the responses revolved around communications. Communication with parents has been a struggle for some because of lack of contact information. If teachers are connecting, they become the tech support for the parent. Connect, communication from the district has been conflicting. The guidelines in the continuity of learning plan that was submitted to the MDE is not what is represented in the nine hours of tech training the staff received during the first week. It also has contradictions in the distance learning plan. Because of this, staff is confused as to what is expected of them. Even as corrected information gets out, there's still inconsistent messaging from principals to staff. Communications of expectations has been a constant concern as educators have a variety of messages that they, that are not necessarily consistent between buildings, divisions, or if they are also a parent of a GRPS student, between teacher to teacher. It is very apparent for staff that work in, it is very apparent for staff that work in multiple buildings. Staff has continued to ask for communication tools to be streamlined. They are currently having to check Google Classroom, CSO, Groupwise, Google Meets, Microsoft Teams, text messages, classroom voicemail, and watch for Zoom meetings that have been scheduled. A streamlining of the system, the system would be a huge help. What would they do differently? I have been stressing the need to set boundaries between the work life and the personal life. It is impossible to work from home, take care of your family, meet the expectations of the district, stay connected with your students, complete the lessons required in a learning platform that you just learned without boundaries. This was a consistent theme in their responses. The things that they would do differently, staff has stated that they will give more grace, reduce their assignments, keep trying, do a mental health check with students before schoolwork, create engaging activities that stay, that keep the students connected, and to simplify. As an educational institution, we know that all students learn differently through different modalities and at different rates. This goes for adults, too. As adult learners, we present with a variety of learning styles that make us yearn for the same grace and individualized learning that we afford our students. Honoring the difficulty of the task, allowing staff to have the boundaries to create a homework balance, and reducing anxiety for staff so that they can do what they really love, teach. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, as we wrap up, next we have superintendent's comments.
Just one comment, Ms. Grant. I, I may have misspoken earlier and said Monday through Thursday with the food sites. The food sites are actually open Monday and Thursday, and we're doubling the meals so that families have as many meals as we can provide as possible. So if I, if I misspoke, I apologize. It's Monday and Thursday, and we're doubling the meals. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, I will go in the order of who I see. Reverend Mathias, do you have closing comments for this evening?
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate the public comments. And I would encourage us to continue to report on the mental health of our students, how social workers and then our partners are, are engaging, KSSN mentoring partners and so forth, challenge scholar partners, just wanting to see more communication with our partners and how they're lending that support both to teachers perhaps and also to our students. Phenomenal work that our district is doing in regards to meeting that need. It's mind-blowing to see how many PCs have been mobilized and in the hotspots so that it hopefully continues to be seamless. So appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you. Dr. Baker?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge, I mean, I just think it's, again, a pretty heroic task that this district has had to pull off getting learning taking place and certainly taking place in a way that none of us would have imagined and none of us would, would see as the best way to do education. But I'm just really impressed with the administration, the principals for getting devices and getting learning plans in place. And also, I want to really appreciate teachers. I've had some communications with teachers over last week or so for different reasons. And I know that they're grappling and trying to figure every way possible to figure out how to do a great job teaching. And, you know, hearing the comments about those relationships and working together is pretty remarkable. And I just want to, just want to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
I don't think I can say anything extra than what Dr. Baker and Reverend Mathias said as far as the great job that Dr. Gorman and the rest of the staff in the district has done during this transition. I guess I do want to have a special shout-out to Mr. Clomparence. I did see on the, his retirement, perfect for him. I know he doesn't like a lot of fanfare, so he's able to sort of sneak out the back door without a big celebration during this time. But definitely didn't want that to go unnoticed. Appreciate you, Mr. Clomparence, for your decades of service and your big shoes to fill for us. And other than that, though, just thank you to everybody else in general.
Thank you. Dr. Flores?
Likewise, to, to repeat what many of my colleagues have said, want to give the district certainly kudos on, on handling a very difficult situation during uncertain times. And appreciation to our teachers who, who are having to basically tread new ground with virtual learning. But, you know, I know that they'll prevail. And certainly a lot of appreciation also to our administration for the job that they're doing. I am, you know, concerned about the 20% that haven't logged on to our learning programs yet. And I would hope that we continue to just chip away to get those kids the education opportunity, opportunities that they deserve and hope that we have some extended learning activities during the summer so that we can perhaps close the gap that we're losing from, from face-to-face education. So good job, everybody. Keep, keep the spirit up, you know.
Okay, sorry. I can never tell if my camera's frozen or someone else's. Ms. Davis?
Yeah, I would just like to also recognize our teachers. And I can speak of the teachers that my two girls who go to GRPS have. It's very apparent to me that these teachers have put in a ton of work preparing for the online learning, just all-new learning for them. And I will say, I am super impressed that my kindergartner knew exactly how to log in online. So these are things they're doing in the classroom every day, too. So just super impressed with the platforms that they're using and the lessons they're creating. And it's also just, it's also very apparent that they are working together. I know we just heard that, that's something that the teachers are, you know, working together to come up with lesson plans and sharing their knowledge and such. But we've, as a parent and students, my students, my kiddos at home, we've seen how the lesson plans are a group effort. And we have teach, an art teacher that my kids don't even have, teaching wonderful lessons to the girls. So they've had a really good time with those lessons. And I also just want to tell the teachers, you know, just because you aren't physically with the kids, you are so loved by the kids. Every time my girls hear from their teachers, they just light up and they miss their classmates and their teachers so much. So any sort of contact that they've had, it just makes their whole day. So thank you so much for all your work, teachers. We recognize it and we appreciate you.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams?
There we go. I'd like to start by congratulating our senior class and let them know that I hope they are encouraged through this process and that they do not let these last few months take away from their accomplishment over these last four years and that they should go forward and be daring and be brave and be great. I also want to thank the staff and the cabinet for going out and delivering those signs to our seniors, helping them feel special as best we can under the circumstances. And then lastly, just celebrate our teachers and for their dedication and also helping our students feel special while they are part. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Shaki?
Well, my comments will probably sound pretty similar, but they bear repeating. So just an abundance of gratitude, especially in these weeks where we pay special recognition to our teachers and to our administrators. So thank you. I, too, am immersed in home educating my children and following along. So, so, so grateful and impressed with watching my kids learn in this way and just find it remarkable how adaptable we are. So especially my third grader, Jax, who within a week's time on CSO knows exactly what he needs to do, exactly where to look, how to submit. This is actually helping my little guy learn how to spell better. And we're having a lot of wins even amongst a time of challenges. So thank you. I can't say it enough. Thank you. Mr. Ross, thank you so much for mentioning Mr. Clomparence's retirement. I, too, want to echo my gratitude, you know, outside of school board. I live in the construction world and I got to see a lot of the other side of our projects in the construction community. And I just know that Mr. Clomparence is so well-respected and has really led our district through such incredible physical plant growth. So thank you for all you've done, Mr. Clomparence. Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I would like to ask Kim Davis, a little girl, to come over and help me with Zoom the next time we have to do one of these. Maybe she can help me get on and I can talk to the people, whatever. But I, too, want to say congratulations to Mr. Clomparence. I also want to say congratulations to the superintendent, the Kev- I also want to say congratulations to the superintendent, the cabinet, the teachers, everybody who's worked so hard on this almost impossible task. And I'd also like to have a shout-out to the parents who are doing all this work because it's a new game for them as well. And so, they're learning a lot about how much fun it can be to organize your kids in school. So, but parents have done a lot. And I'm very, I'm just so proud of everybody and the way things have worked out here.
Thank you. I feel like you all have said it all. I definitely want to salute the staff, the teachers, the parents, and the partners that are really working hard with our district and our students. My daughter's 16, so one of her professors from CC gave her a call and went over finals. And for me, I've had to, throughout my daughter's high school career, consistently be on her about doing her work. But suddenly, with virtual work, she is completing everything quickly and getting it in and getting it done. And when her professor called, I was like, oh, my gosh, is she not doing her work? And she was like, no, she's done with everything. And so, I think to a lot of the points that you all have made, like our students are adapting, but there are a lot of people who are helping them stay, you know, stay in line and understand what is needed. So thank you to all of the district staff and all of the partners who are really surrounding our kids right now. My heart is with the senior class, and I look forward to making your graduation a really memorable one even from our homes. So thank you all very much. Meeting adjourned.